Hi, I'm Mary Wing Soares and I'm here today with the town council candidates for an episode of It's Your Choice. With me today is Deb Nowicki and Joe Green and Tom Frieda, the three folks, townsfolk, who have stepped up to run for town council. And I appreciate you running. Thank you. And we'll start with Joe. Would you like to tell us why you're running, Joe?
Thank you. Yeah, sure. My name is Joe Green, as I was just introduced, and I'm running for town council. Moved here about 16 years ago because of its award-winning schools, low crime rates, and beautiful rural setting. My professional life, I've worked for the same company for over 20 years as a division manager. I'm responsible for the economic viability of 15 stores and supervise 100 employees. I do have a personal vision. I believe in civic responsibility. We all have a duty as citizens within our community to participate in town life and volunteer whenever possible. Due to these beliefs, I am currently the vice president of Baseball in Town, 13 through 15-year-old, 7th, 8th, and 9th grade basketball rec program, and in the fall I run the U-10 soccer program. And finally, I'm very familiar with Londonderry's town government as I'm a past member of the Budget Committee and I currently sit on the zoning board. You asked why am I running for town council. I believe we need a very economically responsible government led by fiscal conservatives, a leader that will question the status quo. I'm afraid of what our town is becoming. More and more people are being pushed out of town because they can no longer afford to live here. Our seniors suddenly find themselves unable to live out their retirement years in the home they've worked all their lives for. I want to keep Londonderry a great place to live. I know I can help achieve this by being a leader who will work hard to maintain the quality of life that we all love so much, but I will not be afraid to make some tough decisions and be financially responsible decisions along the way, I'm sorry. I've been able to achieve this success in my business life because I know how to keep costs down and build revenue in the private sector. If elected to town council, I plan to bring these innovative skills to Londonderry and get the job done once and for all for its residents. So please vote for me, Joe Green, on Tuesday, March 8th, and don't forget to attend town meeting and vote again on Saturday, March 12th. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Deb?
Thank you very much for having us this morning. We appreciate that and to give the taxpayers additional insight. We just had a grueling, what, hour, hour and a half out there already, so thank you.
So you're all warmed up?
We're all warmed up. Some might be repetitious, so I'm gonna, rather than repeat, I'm gonna kinda maybe give some additional insight. My name is Deb Shumkonis Nowicki and I feel very honored to be given the opportunity to run for town council and represent the taxpayer, and I think that's, that is the key component here. We represent the taxpayer and the benefit and the good of the town of Londonderry, and I don't think that that should be taken out of our sights at any moment. I possess a very strong moral and ethical compass, and I think that is pivotal right now. I have extensive education, currently working on a second master's degree in international economics, first masters in taxation, and undergraduate in accounting. I have been a business consultant, both domestically and internationally, and on the corporate front, we have already been fighting these battles for years. Now it's catching up with the towns. I've been very active in resolve, and that's what I'm all about. I have been on the Budget Committee. I have already served with both of these fine young gentlemen that sit beside me. I think one of the keys components is treating people respectfully, listening to their passions. And the key reason I'm running for town council is to, we have to live for today, but we have to envision and plan for tomorrow, and we have to be able to transition into that tomorrow. I would like to ignite the flame and dissolve the apathy that has come about by the way some of the things have occurred. I take pride in my career accomplishments and the ability to inspire others. I possess a high degree of integrity, strong initiative, and a passionate stickability attitude. That is, I'll stand up to the challenges. I embrace the challenges, I invoke innovative perspectives, ideas, and strategies, and I welcome the opportunity in a leadership role to team up with champions in a culture committed to teamwork, in innovative thinking, and going from good to great vision that offers long-term rewards for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. And Tom?
Thank you, Mary. My name is Tom Frieder. I'm running for town council. I came here with my family in 1998. I had three grandchildren at the time. The oldest at the time was gonna, started at first grade at a middle school. Last year, he graduated from the Llandery High School, where his two brothers now attending a public school. His next youngest brother, Dan, is sophomore at the high school, and Matthew is, Mary knows, is an eighth grader at the middle school. I served four budget seasons on the Budget Committee, ending in 2009, which gives me, I think, a very helpful perspective on both the town side of finances and the school side, since we address both issues from the taxpayers' point of view. I served three and a half years on the planning board, also with Mary. Very enjoyable, where you got an idea of the developments that the town is facing going forward, and from both angles, where from, you see from the developer's point of view what his problems, frustrations are going, trying to build in this town, trying to develop anything in this town, and from the town's point of view, and trying to protect the heritage that it has. When I was on the Budget Committee, my first year, we, we gave our opinions as to various things that the town and the school district, what we thought would be best, in best interest of the town. And to a large extent, we were pretty much dismissed. But one of the suggestions that came out of that was, if we're gonna have a position, we had to back it up. And during the next two years, one year as chairman, we proceeded to do that by putting down in writing what we proposed to change and the justification for it. And while not many of our opinions were accepted by the either board, at least we had a foundation of what we were doing and why. And some of the things that we did address were appreciated, including one of the things that I think I can fairly say that I was in support of was averaging out the cost of road construction by roadblocks over the last few years, which have been supported by the town voters over the last number of years, even in tough times as we've now seen. I'm running for town council because I believe my experience and my background as an attorney and CPA for almost 29 years as an attorney, and CPA just shorter than that, gives me a perspective, and with my experience in the Budget Committee, gives me the knowledge to help in these tough times. I think as a town councilor, we have to start budgeting now for the times that we're living in, which is very difficult economically, and we have to look towards the people in this town who are doing as well, who are on a fixed income, aren't receiving raises, and we need to start budgeting accordingly for those people. That's why I'm running for town council.
Thank you. Thank you. So you've all, are all numbers people. So given that we've just come through the budget season, do you think that the council cut enough from the budget? Do you think they cut too much? Do you think they cut the correct things? How might you have done it differently?
You know, I don't think I would have done it much differently. One of the things I talked about earlier was the fact that last year's campaign strategy for me, if you will, because this is the third time I'm running, should I have said that? But the campaign strategy and my war cry was zero. Let's start with zero. And sure enough, to my surprise, that's what the town council did. Now, you can't just say, you know, go cut five police officers, six firefighters, three ambulances, and 20 teachers. You can't do that. When you're, when you're trying to get to zero, and I've done budgeting in private sector for over 20 years, and by the way, as I talked about earlier, the 15 stores that I run have an over $30 million budget. So I've been doing this for a long time, and when you go ahead and you do budgets, there, it's the small things that matter, okay? It's the commonalities that matter, that different departments can share different services. So it's the small things that matter, as I said, it's the personnel. It's the negotiation with the personnel. I think the town did a great job with the unions. I mean, both sides came out of that union talk believing that they won, and that's a first. And, and they gave up a little bit, the town gave up a little bit, and they come out of it feeling like, feeling like they've done something for the community. So to answer your question directly, I would have done exactly what they did. I think it was, it was a very big effort. It's not a small thing to do, and I actually, if elected, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna try to do the same exact thing next year, with maintaining services, of course. Again, it's a very, very, very careful scalpel incision that you have to make.
I agree. I think to, it's good that they received the goal of a flat tax. Would I have had different issues on how to get, you know, how do you get there? Probably. I think what we've gotta stop doing is what, you know, town managers and administrators typically do, which is, you know, oh, you wanna cut, fine, well, you know, let's look at the library, fire department, police department, et cetera. It's time to get a little more serious about things. For example, we have, for the last five or six years, have had an award-winning finance department. Okay. About a year ago, we elevated a position in there from town accountant to town controller, a substantial raise. My problem with that is, is why are we adding salary and staffing levels at the top? And then when budget cuts come, we're looking at, oh, we have to close the library, we have to cut a librarian, we have to cut a fireman. You know, I think we need to be a little bit smarter and a little bit more fear in the way we handle these things, and look at the top as much as we look at the bottom. That's what I, would I've had a criticism. Another criticism, I guess I would have had, was last year, well, let me go back, two years ago, when we were in a dire financial crisis, and we were told we were going to be shorted a very large amount from the state. One of the proposals by Dave Carron, the town manager, was to return to the town's general fund the L-U-C-T tax, the land use change tax. And for legal reasons, they couldn't do it unless there was a vote, and they couldn't do it that year. Last year, Jay Hooley, who was, I think, chairman of the Budget Committee, had a citizens' initiative petition, where he proposed the same thing. Now, all it would have done was take the land use change tax and put it into the general fund, didn't take it away from conservation. What it would have given the town council is a tool. They would have had, you know, on average, about $250,000 extra dollars. That would have lessened the impact. And in this year, when, when, you know, we're right in the middle now of kind of an open space suspension while the task force completes its work, you know, $250,000 probably wouldn't be of any, you know, great impact on the Conservation Commission, but we would have had the money to avoid a lot of these issues this year. I think it was a lack of foresight on the part of the town council, and frankly, the Budget Committee, that didn't support that. They only got one vote on each. And that's what I think you need to do. We need to return to the town council the ability to make these decisions. And if giving money, if that land use change tax had been put back into the general fund, we could have avoided, you know, certain cuts in this town this year and still maintained the zero.
Well, do you feel like, as though we're in cutting those positions where it's detrimental to our town, though, and how the way our town is gonna be run?
No, but I think, you know, is it critical that we have these positions? No, I think we'll get by without them. I think, though, if we have as an overall goal a zero increase, then we have to make cuts. But we wouldn't have had to make cuts if we, if people had the foresight to put that money back into the general fund. And frankly, it's a fairness issue. We've asked fire, police, public works, the library to take a pay cut. We don't ask conservation to take a pay cut. It's just not fair.
Okay, well.
Thank you. We were all asked this question across the street, and I know you did not have the opportunity to see that, yet you were hosting another spot. All of us here did support zero balance increase. Actually, I believe the three of us were instrumental when we were on the Budget Committee in instilling and sticking to the default budget. We took criticism back then, and now we're glad to see that we were standing our ground in that. And it does go to people on fixed income, 100 foreclosures last month, and the list goes on and on. I personally can say that one of the many reasons I am running is tired of seeing the intimidation tactics where a few people wanna run the town, and then they go after people, and they're targeted. That just actually happened to me on the way from going across the street to here. So I've already begun standing up for my challenges, and I'm not even on the town council yet. What would I do differently? I can say, number one, we brought this up years ago. The budget, as 100%, 85% of the budget, is salaries and benefits. Yes, we do have the union contracts that we must abide by. Yes, we have begun negotiations as the town council with these unions. That's a good start. However, what I didn't see in all the years that I've been watching this is, how can we stop some of the bleeding and then do the transitions and the changes? You know, it might take a strategic plan. That's one. Two.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, Deb, but when you look at the personnel that we have in our town, where would you cut?
Where would I cut? Well, firstly, I'm gonna agree with Tom. I think that we shouldn't be adding positions. We shouldn't be giving pay hikes just to give a raise and to call a person that had a function, maybe a little twist, change it, give them a big raise. I can also say I would have changed, we already had a town website. We're trying to attract business. We then opened up a second website, and that was with the part-time job, and then guess what? Now they find, they didn't have the money to maintain the second website when we already had one. So I think, looking at the core of who we have for personnel, there are a lot of people out there haven't had raises in years. Yes, in some cases, it's driven by unions, but we have to take a look at stopping the bleeding and not continuing that.
But when you have an award-winning finance department, shouldn't that be rewarded?
I think an award-winning finance department is outstanding, and that's hard work and dedication. However, that also goes to personal fortitude and quality of work. My question would be, what good is an award-winning finance department if the town is failing?
Do you believe our town is failing right now?
I think that our town right now is not certainly in a strong negotiating point in attracting businesses. We are a house divided. It's in the newspaper every day. I went to the bank yesterday, there was a union leader talking about how so far it's cost $17,000 for a lawsuit. I think we need to get our housing gear, and we are-
But that's not town council members against town council members, that's citizens questioning the, their government. So should they not have the right to question their government?
They absolutely should have the right to question their government. But what I also want people to take a look at is, what are the real motives? What are the real motives? Look at the, look at that lawsuit and look at, I just talked about this across the street. You know, conservation land has been a major issue. We've spent a fortune developing infrastructure already. I'm not seeing this great economic development plan having businesses in flux in this town because it takes so long and we have so much controversy going on. So I think we are not at our strongest point. We are, our reputation, we talked about that across the street as well, I think we definitely need to do some damage control.
So are you saying businesses aren't coming to our town because we have controversy in our town?
I think every town may have controversy, but I, I think right now, people are leaving.
Gentlemen, you can jump in, too. I mean, don't feel as though it's just a one-on-one conversation.
We have a mass exodus going on right now, and, you know, look at the schools. We lost, what, 600 students? We're about to lose maybe 39 teachers, 100 foreclosures. You know, something, we might have an award-winning finance, but we've gotta look at the whole picture.
Is that happening across the country, or is that happening only in Londonderry, New Hampshire?
Well, I mean, with regard to the financing, my, my point in bringing up the controller position was, previous to the controller position, we had a town accountant position at about $50,000, and we moved the position up in salary, not, we didn't promote that person. We didn't give that person a raise, we just, in a sense, upgraded the position to town controller and then added 20, 15 or $20,000 in salary to get somebody what they considered more qualified.
And did we give other job responsibilities to that person? Are you sure?
Pretty much positive, yeah, because there isn't any, there's been no change. You've had the same amount of people in that department. You know, but my point is, you had, you had award-winning department five years in a row. Now you, even if you're at 100%, why are you making it 120%? This person or the people and the structure we had was awarded five years in a row of financial reporting awards. What's the need to spend that money? It'd be great if we're rolling in the dough, but we're not. And now you've got $15,000 or $20,000 going to a position. Well, there's, there's two ballot initiatives by citizens. $20,000 for volunteer firemen. Well, there's your money right there for that.
So you have a specific use for that money?
Well, my point is, there's choices. There's choices for that, and you've got 20, you know, I don't know how many volunteer firemen there are, but you've had that program in existence a long time, and we're doing this for what purpose? You know, do you get, I don't think you get extra, you know, award points because you've now changed the position from town accountant to town controller. It was good enough, it wasn't broken, why fix it? And we're not rolling in the dough that we can do these things. I'm not talking, I'm not talking about giving a person who did a good job as town accountant, you know, a promotion and a raise. We didn't do that. I think that person left, and we brought somebody else in.
I mean, the three of us talked a lot about people, you know, losing their house. We talked a lot about our seniors struggling, but that's not all of Londonderry either, okay? That's a, obviously, there's a big chunk of it, but that's not all of Londonderry. Some of us that still have jobs and are still maintaining status quo out there wanna pay for those services that they receive. They want to have an award-winning school, okay? They wanna have the top-notch teachers that we have right now. They wanna have award-winning finance departments that can be innovative, and maybe, as you said, Mary, take on two or three different responsibilities, and that person that, I don't know particularly, but maybe that person that got that promotion could do that. So in reality, if you look at it, that person just took on three jobs because of their abilities, and in the long run, the town's gonna make out for that financially. You know, one of the things we talk about all the time, I think the biggest thing that's hurting us right now is the retirements. You know, these are, these are the ways that we're able to take, and I just look at it in a different way, Tom. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I look at it, maybe there's three people, three people's salaries, okay, that would have taken the job of that one particular person now doing those type of duties, and they're taking on those duties because they have the fortitude to be able to do it. Yeah, you gotta pay them more money, but you don't have the three retirements at the end, you're only gonna have one. So again, as Deb, you pointed out, I don't want everything that I say here today to be all doom and gloom, because it isn't doom and gloom. I really don't think our town is, is in disaster mode right now either. I think, you know, that we have the ability to look at five or 10 years down the road and see our way out because we're strong-minded people, and I just, I just look at it a little differently. I don't, I don't, you know, there's, there's other, when you, when you give somebody a raise or give them a promotion, that does a lot for the particular person, and if they're, again, willing to take on two or three jobs, it saves us in the long run, five or 10 years down the road. So we're doing things that may not affect today. It's not gonna cost us any more money right off the bat because they obviously did a great job balancing to a zero tax rate, but at the same time, we're looking four, five, or six years down the road when these people might retire and the savings that that could cause.
Okay, so it's not all gonna be about cutting the budget, though. It's also gonna be about developing or encouraging smart growth in the town.
Strategy.
So how do we do that? Go ahead, it's not a-
Oh, okay. I, I just wanted to respond to what Joe said and also what you're asking. We, we talked about a lot of this already, so it's, it's a great follow-up, I guess. One of the keys is, unions are unions, and we have to abide by mitts of the law. But what we saw in the Budget Committee and what we're seeing again is, I agree with Joe. We are looking for those services. We're used to those services. We're looking at smarter services, combination of services, school and town, not having a divided town. But we are also looking for, how can we, how can we go forth in a better negotiation light? Right now, people retire. We have to keep positions unfilled to fulfill union contract obligations. That's not good for our town. We need those services.
Okay, well, Deb, it just, it seems to me as though you're saying that unions don't have a heart, and that unions will not make any concessions, and in fact, unions do make concessions.
We have one do it this year. Absolutely.
With the school, with the schoolteachers, you know? The schoolteachers have conceded $113,000 or $135,000.
Well, when you do, when you do the playback on this, that's not what I said. What I said is, unions sat down, and it was a great start. If you go back and really listen to what I said-
I know, but you're, you're saying now, you're, you're saying the, the school, I mean, the town's divided, and you're, and you're pointing the division between the town and the unions, okay?
No, I'm not.
Well, that's the way it's coming across.
Okay, well, let's clarify that, then.
Let's clarify it.
Okay. What I'm saying is, I think one of the roles of our town is that we have to sit down and look for it at a strategy. If we go at the rate that we're going, the unions have conceded. I sit in those teachers' rooms, as do you, and listen to what these teachers and what individuals are willing to give up, okay? Unions have come forth, we're all in agreement with that, and that's a great start. We have to look at a long-term plan. That's for this year. We cannot continue in a bickering capacity. We have to look at a long-term strategic plan.
You know, I've heard you say, you know, the town's divided and this bickering. I'm not sure that that's the case. The fact is, you know, unions have a role. They represent people, and they represent their membership, and they negotiate with the town. And the town comes back and negotiates. And, you know, you can say in one year, oh, maybe the union got this, and this is, you know, not what we're getting in the outside, but, you know, the fact is, it's not that large of an issue about causing division in this town. You know, frankly, the idea that this lawsuit has caused businesses to leave town, I think, is, you know, rather exaggerated. The lawsuit happened in December. I mean, I don't think businesses have exited since December just because of the lawsuit. I frankly don't think that any of them have, have left because of, because of the lawsuit. I mean, that's just not realistic. The people that have filed the lawsuit, they have a position. The school district has its position. You know, as far as lawsuits go, it's relatively, you know, minor, frankly. It's, it's not very contentious. Both sides put this stuff in, and you're just waiting for a decision. But, but the idea that, you know, that the town is divided and at each other's throat, I think really misses the point. We're in, we're in a tough time economically. You can drive down to Massachusetts, I do it every day, Joe does it every day, and you, you know, you wanna rent an office park, you can. There's all, you know, just pick which side you wanna be on, north or south, because there's lots of businesses that are, facilities that are available. You can drive up near the airport, there's lots of empty stores and empty offices available, right? The question isn't about, is that caused by, you know, divisions in the town or something like that? That's a minor thing. It has more to do with economics and more to do with the fact that the economy is tough right now. And to put it on, frankly, divisions in the town, a lawsuit on the school quorum issue, or because, you know, a battle over unions, I think is just really exaggerating and not focusing in on what the problem is. You know, we can sit here, everybody, you could bring in anybody you want- You know, we can sit here, everybody, you could bring in anybody you want and say, let's cut the budget. The fact is that the budget is $90 million to run this town and it's pretty much going to be $90 million whether, you know, we cut 1% or 2% out. It takes that kind of money to put the lights on, to put the police out in the street, to put teachers in the school and to teach 5,000 kids. Because even though there's 600 kids less than there were five years ago, there's still 5,000 kids there. You know, that is at a minimum is what it's going to cost. And what you're really going to understand when it comes to fiscal matters is you've got to understand the difference between fixed costs and variable costs. And the idea that, you know, if we stop a house from being built, we're saving $8,000 is simply just not accurate. You know, even the 618 kids that are out of the system, they don't necessarily translate into $12,000 in savings per kid. It doesn't work that way. If, Mary, you're a teacher, if you, I don't know how many kids are in your class, 22, 23? Okay. You get a salary. If next year, with your increase, you're now teaching 21 kids, we're not cutting your salary because you're teaching one or two less kids. And that's the way it works.
That's a fixed cost.
Right. And, you know, the light bill here doesn't go down if Joe and I leave and it's the two of you talking. That's, that's the real issue that we should be addressing. What can we do to save money on, on these and stop looking at things like, oh, we stopped the house from being built, we're going to save money?
Okay, so you're talking, you're talking about open space as a variable as opposed to, I mean, the conservation funds.
Right.
As a variable as opposed to a fixed cost.
Right. And I'm also talking about, look at the town. We, you know, in the last six or seven years or 10 years, for example, according to the annual report, we've added about 1,200 houses, housing stock to the town, right? Well, frankly, fire and police have been relatively stable.
Right, they have been.
They haven't added anybody. You've got to exclude the airport division, that's about 20 cops. You've added maybe five cops. So when you say, oh, we put a house in there, that adds cost to the town. It doesn't, you know.
Well, it does add cost, but we've chosen not to add cost.
Well, but...
I think we've made a decision not to do it.
But Mary, if I, if I build a house and the fire department never goes there and the police department never goes there, has it actually added cost to the fire department and the police department? You have a cop patrolling whether my house is there or not.
No, but they probably wouldn't patrol as often if your house wasn't there.
Well, if they come down the street with his 50 other houses. Does adding one house add to the cost?
No, certainly not, not one.
Mary, can I, can I bring us back to your question?
Yes.
Because your question was, strategy for smart growth. And I don't think, I don't think I've heard the answer yet, so I'm going to answer your question in my term. Smart growth, in my opinion, and the definition, in my opinion, would be having, attracting people to Londonderry so that you can increase your revenue, which will then offset the taxes being put to our people and in our community. So smart growth would be things like doing the fire station with grants. That would be smart growth because you need a fire station in order to support the buildings and the businesses that are going up in the north part of town. Smart growth, in my opinion, could be taking a look at the open stock that we have up by the airport and offering incentives to businesses to come, okay? Because, again, today, we're in the status that we're in, okay? There's nothing we're going to do about it besides just sit here and try to work our ways out. I mean, people are out there right now saying, how am I going to pay my bills next month? Okay? That's the here and now. But we can't be so close-minded that we don't have the faith that we're going to get out of this someday. So the, the thing that I'm saying is that, give the businesses the incentives today while we're hurting. It's not going to cost us anything differently. There are already, there's already nobody in those buildings. Give them the tax incentive, which then will help us with that type of revenue two or three or four years down the road to gain tax revenue. So these are the type of smart growth. The other thing is, talking about Pettingill Road, I know, I saw the article, it's going to take 10 or 20 years and, you know, that type of thinking is, is an issue, it's a problem. I mean, I think we have to have town councils that are going to direct certain people that work for the town to go after it. Don't, don't let it take 10 or 20. The governor said it, our state representatives have said that that road is one of the most important roads for New Hampshire's growth, love or mind Londonderry. So, we're going to do it smart. We're not going to pay for it ourselves, we're going to get them to pay for it. Again, smart growth because when that road is, was, is developed and if we can be the driving force to it, that'll bring more tax revenue to us as well. It'll be like an open gate for us to connect the airport to 93. So these are the type of things, to answer your question directly, strategies for smart growth that we need to instill. Again, did it for 20 years, I know it's, it's, it sounded like an old thing, an old adage, but I've done it for 20 years, I know how to do it and I want the town to give me the opportunity to do it for this.
Don't raise your hand, just talk.
Okay. I was actually the one that brought up the, the Pettingill Road project and the infrastructure and all the money that we have spent. I think that's wise money. I think we need to utilize it now. I think that we need to be out there actively, building relationships and expediting that process of bringing business in. You know, we have a reputation, oh, it takes so long. We really need to focus on even adding that to our website, what the process is, how we can expedite it, it's kind of going...
You're talking about roadblocks for businesses, yeah.
Yeah. It's trying to go in the express lane at the supermarket, you know?
Right. And I'm on the planning board, so I would take issue with you telling me that there's roadblocks to businesses because Coca-Cola has expanded, the freezer warehouse is expanding, there are, you know, there are other businesses that are coming in, McDonald's, we might get another McDonald's up on 28. You know, there are people that are coming forward with, with ideas and they are, as long as they follow our regs, they're coming, they're sailing right through.
And they did it all without a tax incentive, right? Oh, okay. They did it because it's a good business...
They're already here.
But it's, they did it, they, you know, they could have moved somewhere else.
Right.
But they did it here because it's a good business decision for them.
It is a good business decision for them.
But Mary, you're, you're talking about, just, just really quick, you're talking about something that we touched upon a little bit earlier, sensationalism. Sometimes in the news, we're citizens, we're not, you know, I'm on the ZVA, so I only know what zoning board issues come about. We read the newspaper, we listen to townspeople. Sometimes the sensationalism, and thank you for correcting us on that, I've heard for the past three years that I've been running for town council, that Londonderry gives, through the zoning ordinances, provides too many roadblocks for businesses. Now, that's what I've heard. Am I trying to, trying to clarify that?
Right.
Yeah, we're talking about it now and that's what, that's what, that's what people that are watching the show want to hear and I'm glad you clarified it. So now I'm, I'm being educated, but the person, the, the person that's out there, the other 27,000 people that are in town, don't, they only can go by what's been, been said out there, you know?
Right. And I think that we have to remember that in our town, if we want our town to, to have a huge amount of tax revenue, we can certainly let it go to the developers. We can let them just run the show.
No, we don't want to become Manchester.
Build whatever they want.
No, thank you.
Okay, well then, then you need to understand that there are going to be some rules and regulations that they have to follow in order for us to keep the...
Zoning is great, zoning is great. Let me just, really quick, the zoning, the zoning ordinance is not my problem. My, my thing, my thought process is, is that, again, there are areas in town that we already have developed, we, there are areas, and this is, this is part of the zoning, there are areas in town that we have these parcels of land, we have these buildings, we don't want to have 102 become like Manchester. We don't want to have another dairy town, midtown. If done properly, we can keep the businesses where they, we need to keep them and still maintain our rural settings, our beautiful apple orchards, so...
Well, except for Woodmont.
Except for Woodmont. But again, you know, one of the things I said earlier was that, you know, you can look at that as half-empty, the glass half-empty or the glass half-full. Last year on this program, I was totally upset about it because, again, it's, it's taken away apple orchards, it's taken away the beautiful rural aesthetic feel of it. But you know what it's done? Now, as town councils, as leaders within the town, we can help shape that parcel. We can help in the, in the planning stages. Right now, I've read so many of the things that were talked about on Londonderry Times and you did a great job really asking questions to the developers about, you know, hey, what exactly is this going to look like? We haven't, we've made some, some practical drawings, but you really haven't put anything down on paper to kind of quote what you said. And that's true, we need to get some more decisions out of them and how can we have an opinion on something if we don't really know what it's, what it's going to be like? So give us an idea. And, and that's, to go back, we talk about the zoning and the, the POD and all these different regulations. I'm glad that we have these regulations in place for that particular giant part of town. We don't want it to become a little city and we have to make sure that we...
But that's exactly what it's going to be. I mean, let's, let's just look at what he's told us he's doing. He's building 1,300 homes. You know, not maybe one acre houses, but he's building 1,300 homes, residences.
But through zoning, we can, we can shape that.
But, you know, but Joe, there's 1,300 houses, that's going to have an impact on the schools. And while it not, may not be one for one, you have to look at what, let's, let's start with what we know, let's start with what he said. His developers have said, or his planning people have said, that, you know, the project might be tax neutral, might be tax neutral. Well, okay, then it's not providing any tax relief. It's just, you know, it's nothing. It won't affect us, apparently, that, we believe him, it's not going to do anything but be neutral. So we're not going to get any, you know, help, tax relief from his development. What, what, you know, and I know you're on the planning board, I was on there too, and I'm not saying it's right, but I think the perception is by a lot of developers that Londonderry is not business or developer-friendly. I don't want it to, I don't want you to be, you know, a walkover. I don't have a problem with that. I think we need to look at the process. You know, I think there's some things we can do to shorten the process. Frankly, maybe, what has bothered me when I was on the planning board is the, you know, just the length of the meetings and the repetitiveness of reading everything out like we're five-year-olds. Let's send the guy a PDF file, tell him what his problems are and he comes to the meeting instead of hearing a lot of times for the first time that night, as he sat there for three hours, you know, what, what issues he's got. Let's get, you know, let's give him a heads up, tell him what's wrong so that he can come back with answers. A lot of this stuff is just paperwork and we need to do that. The second thing is, you know, for a long time, and, you know, at Exit 5, for example, and at other parts of the town, you know, zoning decided, we are not going to permit big box stores. Fine, that's your decision, fine, we're going to do that. But then don't bemoan the fact that the big box stores then are built up at Hooks at Exit 10.
I'm not bemoaning it at all.
I understand.
Let them have it.
But then don't say, you know, we're doing everything here. The fact is, when, when, when your planning department regs say that the biggest hot build, a box store you can build is 75% of what they need to do in order to build a business, you know, for example, a Best Buy. Best Buy comes in, you know, cookie cutter sizes, they're this size and if it's 100,000 square feet, it's 100,000 square feet. And when your regs say you can only build 75, guess what? They just leave. So be conscious of that. And if you want to say, well, we want to incentivize business here, then you've got to look at what the people who are the customers, the businesses, what they need to develop here. And you have to make your choice. And if you make your choice that we're still going to keep the 75% role here, then fine, then just wave goodbye as everybody goes off to Hooks. Maybe what you want, but you're leaving, you're taking the tools out of the town council.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think it's a doom and gloom, I mean, we're talking about Woodmont.
I'm not saying it's doom and gloom. I'm just saying, it's reality. You've made a choice.
It's just the type of business you're going to have in this town as opposed to someplace else. And again and again and again, Tom, whenever anybody has asked this question, do you want big box stores in this town?
Right.
They've said no.
They've said no and then they bemoan the fact that they're built up at Hooks.
Well, you know, they're going to have to bemoan.
I understand, I'm not, I'm not saying one is better than the other.
Right.
I'm just saying, you can't say we're going to incentivize business here and, and, you know, we're going to do the smart thing. Well, the smart thing is, if you want to incentivize business, change your reg and let them build here. But you've made a conscious choice not to. So it's not that easy.
But there are certain types of businesses that will come into our town, given the regs that we have.
Right. And you've got, to a large extent, an empty Jack's, Jack's Bridge Road area.
We have to reach out to your point, Mary.
Okay. And frankly, before you go down the Pettingill Road trip, I'd like to see you guys successfully build that, out, build that out.
That's what I was talking about, there's, there's plenty of potential there. I mean, that's where the big box guys can go if that's what we want to do. I mean, what we're talking about and what people have, that I've heard are talking about is you don't want to see 102 become the mall road up in Manchester. We just don't want, that's not that part of town, that's our core part of town. Now, something different up at Exit 5, Jack's Bridge Road, Pettingill, near the airport, that's where we welcome that type of...
But, but what I want to...
It makes more sense than anywhere, the highways, they're the airports there.
But what I want to avoid is the mistake is, is to, let's go build Pettingill Road with TIFs and money and all this stuff and then...
That's not what I said. I said get the proper funding.
No, I understand.
Right.
But I don't want to go down that road and then 10 years later, we find out it doesn't work. And the people that were responsible for those decisions have now no longer elected and they've left town.
Yeah. And we, we're stuck with those TIFs right now, I understand that and we, I think we learned from our errors. You know, it might have been a good thought process then, we have to pay, pay for it now.
And that's all I'm saying, you've got Jack's Bridge Road area. When you successfully do that, then come to me and talk about Pettingill Road, but until then, no.
I'd, I'd like to bring up a point regarding the Pettingill Road and that whole area where the airport is because...
Why are you raising your hand?
Well, no, I, I, you know, I'm just so used to it from being on the committee, you know, is, you know, we already have an infrastructure there, we're going to have a new fire department there. We have a tremendous asset in a collaboration with the Manchester Airport. There are a lot of new federal grants and incentives that will be available in going forth. You know, I'd like to see our town going and pursuing them. It's unfortunate due to federal cuts, we, we've lost over $2 million and that's why we have to cut staff and make some changes, but there are new grants coming, new grants to bring business to job, give job creation. And isn't it wonderful to have job creation and have the people be able to live in the same community and bring in that revenue because that's what it's all about.
We have people that do this every day that, that are employed by the town. We have to, as town councils, point to them and say, this is what I want you to, give them a directive.
Right.
I'm, I'm a division manager, again, I give my managers directives, okay? I explain the directives, I teach them how to do it and then I say, okay, now go out and do your job. You've got to go and get those grants, you've got to go and get, apply for those, those monies, otherwise somebody else is going to. We have to be first on the block and we have to be aggressive with it and constantly going after it.
Frankly, given what they're talking about in Washington and what they're talking about in Concord, I, I think you've seen the end of, of grants.
Of grants, yes.
Yeah.
Unless it's private philanthropists.
Yeah.
That are willing to, you know, help us grow.
You know, you, you, the state shorted the town and the schools to a large extent this year.
This year, absolutely.
Okay. More likely than not, next year it's going to be worse.
Guys, we're, again, we're talking about 2011, okay? What about 2015, 2016? You know, these are things that, eventually, we're going to get out of this. I mean, I don't think the state's going to go bankrupt and all of a sudden we're going to, the fires are going to start burning on the hills. I mean, it's just, again, doom and gloom is not the way to look at this. We are in a situation right now, we have to have faith in our leaders, and that's what I'm asking for, faith in me, to be able to think innovatively and be able to see our way through this and see our way to the next two or three or four years by look, still looking at these, by believing in the fact that we're going to get out of this thing.
And before we wrap up, I just wanted to make one point about, about Woodmont Orchards and about, you were saying that the developer may, is saying that perhaps it will only be tax neutral, it won't be tax positive. What I think would be positive about it is, if they do develop the retail stores there, it would give us jobs, it would give us local jobs for the, for the young people that live in our town. It would also give us some housing availability for the people who want to stay in this town that can't afford the, you know, three and four bedroom homes. So I think that while it might not be tax revenue positive, it will be positive in that regard.
And what it's not going to do is, not going to shift the burden to, to commercial versus residential.
No.
I mean, the rough percentage that it is now is going to stay the same by that development.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
And that's not, and that's not what it's being sold as, you know, to us, has, at all.
Well, I think last year, that's what a lot of people were thinking, but they had, but they didn't have the benefit of hearing, you know, what the developer was saying at the time, you know, the only, at the time, all you knew was it was sold and this is what we think might happen.
Right.
Well, now you've got a clearer picture.
Right. Well, and even so, we need to get an even clearer picture of what might be going on.
And the only thing, one comment that I wanted to leave, leave it with, that I just, I think that we have a vested interest in trying, not giving up and saying, hey, you know what, they already have a plan, whatever their plan is, is what we have to go. We have to help shape that, at least be heard. Don't just say, you know, whatever they have for an idea is going to be what they're going to have for idea. I've heard that too many, too many times. You have to have hope, you have to say to yourself-
Well, and to that end, on Thursday nights from 7:00 to 9:00, and on Saturday mornings, they are opening up their, their offices over on-
At the warehouse, yeah.
At the Woodmont Orchards.
Warehouse.
For members of the public to go in and look at the, you know, the mock-
Chariot.
The mockups and to express their opinions as to what they want to see. And from the very beginning conception to where it is right now, there have been a tremendous number of changes in response to what people have said.
So we can make a difference.
So you can make a difference.
Absolutely.
But you have to go and you have to express your opinion.
Absolutely.
Don't wait until it's before the, the planning board at the site plan level to say, well, I don't really like that. You have had months and months and months to be talking about it, and that's when we need to hear about, you know, your opinions. But, back to the three of you, you're running for town council, I'll give you a few minutes just to wrap up and say, you know, ask for people's votes, and remember, we have two times to vote in our town on, is it March 11th, is there?
March 12.
March 12.
Town meeting, yeah.
Town meeting, and then March 8th is the, is the general election. So please come to both sessions and vote. And, Tom, we ended with you before, we'll start with you now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mary, and thanks to everybody here for participating. Again, my name is Tom Freed, I'm running for town council. I think in these times, what we need to do is, we have to look towards remaining fiscally conservative as we go forward. We don't need to attack each other or demonize one side or the other here. People have opinions, people have different opinions, people have strong opinions, but at the end of the day, what we have here is something that, you know, we're 90% in agreement on most things. I doubt anybody thinks that teachers don't deserve a raise, or firemen don't deserve a raise, or things like that. And we'll get through it if we start the acrimony in these things and start the accusations. I think most people here understand that, most people will come to the town meeting and come to the election and, you know, and vote their conscience and do what, what they believe is right. This year, I think one of the things that we need to do is, as I said, we have to start looking towards the people in town that have the least ability to make it through these tough times. I'm glad the town council took a strong stand and held the line on taxes, because there's a lot of people who aren't getting a raise this year. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we can get through these next few years and start building on what we've done here in being fiscally conservative. I would ask for one of your votes for town council, and thank you for your time.
And I'll be a gentleman, say ladies before gentlemen.
Oh, that's, okay, great, thank you. It would be an honor and a privilege to serve the town of London Derry in the capacity of town council, and I sincerely firstly ask that you get out and vote. Your vote is your voice. And I think we all need to be part of a great foundation to going from good to great as a community. We need to be a catalyst, as a collaborative. We are surrounded by other fantastic communities that I have watched Hudson grow. I've been out there in the surrounding communities and throughout the state, already building those relationships and those affiliations. I think it is about being able to bring our skills and our talents and embrace the change, looking at the facts, the circumstances, the consequences, the risks, and being able to have a strategic plan so that we can utilize the knowledge that we have and we bring to the table to give a guided transition, to give a forum for every single person within this community and those individuals and businesses that would love to be a part of this great community. Expediting the process, looking at how we live today, every day, those that are on fixed income, those that are retired, those that are young and we want to retain. And I am really, really looking at bringing and keeping the talent. We have such a fine educational system. Mary works in it, I work in it. And when you talk to these young, talented students, I also think internship is a fantastic way to keep the young, to keep down our costs. I know states and, I just met with the Department of Defense recently, and surrounded by interns. And I think that's a great way to also get them involved. They're the ones that are going to be here 20 years from now with these projects. Isn't it great to be able to transition and pass that knowledge down? So again, I ask you to go out and vote, make a difference. Don't let it be, you know, I think, what, 1,700, 1,800 people come out and vote out of, what, 17,000 registered voters? Really take pride in your community, be a voice, and just let us go from good to great. Thank you.
I have a few notes here, I just wanted to make sure that I hit upon. Mary, first off, I want to thank you for this great opportunity, again, once again, third time in a row for me.
You've had three times of terms.